I know. So if I start copying, then I'm gonna be.
Yeah. I love them. It's gonna be a heartbreak if that's actually the case. All right. I can have everybody's attention. We're gonna call the Talent City Council Regular Meeting of December eighteenth at order. Roll call, please. Here? Here?
Here.
Here? Here?
Here.
Thank you. First item on the, or the second item on the agenda is additions or corrections to the agenda. Do we have any additions or corrections? Gary?
We have a request of addition suggested to be placed at nine point two. As you, as you know, we have a contract with Briarville Fire and Forestry to undertake hazard mitigation work along the, along the Greenway and along Wagner Creek. And they have been doing a lot of work there. They submitted a invoice, I believe just today. The amount of the invoice exceeds the city manager's offer. It's in the amount of ninety-four thousand and eight dollars. So we're requesting you place this on the agenda tonight so we can get their invoice submitted to go through OEM and through KNOT.
Any other additions or corrections? None. So with that, if there's consent to the council, we're adding on nine point two. Is there any objection? All right, seeing no objection, we'll go ahead and move on to item number three, which is community announcement. Steph?
Thank you. I have a few announcements this evening. One is I wanted to acknowledge that Karen Wofley is working as the reporter this evening for the meeting and Hector Roger is over in the other corner working on the audio portion and video portion in the absence of Hector Flores. So thank them for being on board tonight for this, this meeting. So city notices, city offices will be adjusting their service hours from following dates. On December twenty-fourth, the office will be open from the hours of eight thirty AM until noon. On December twenty-fifth, Christmas Day, the office will be closed. On December thirty-first, Christmas Eve, or excuse me, New Year's Eve, the office will be open from eight thirty AM until noon. And it will be closed on January first, New Year's Day, and will also be closed on January twentieth, Martin Luther King Jr. Vacancies on city committees and commissions. For a complete list of vacancies, visit the city website at cityoftalent.org. We are looking for nationally inclined residents to join the budget committee for next fiscal year. We see, I'll cover the next item under city management reports. But the committee notices Rogue River Watershed, Watershed Council will host a Willow staking event on January thirty-first at ten AM at Lindsbury Park. Visit their website at rogue river watershed council dot org for more information. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other community announcements? All right, seeing none. The next item on the agenda is item four, speakers heard on non-agenda items. Do we have any speaker request forms? Okay, and none have come in through email? And there are none over the counter. So at this time, we stop accepting city speaker request forms from either online or in in chambers. All right. Next item on the agenda is item number five, which is five point one presentation from Malcolm Voyager of Ivy Can Do. Let's get you a microphone.
One on the podiums.
Okay. And so if you'll make sure the light is green.
It looks green.
And we actually need the there you go. All right. So if you'll state your name and city for the record.
Is it okay if I leave the mic on the thing, or should I hold it, or?
You can dive, you can, you can do either. I don't know. Have we ever, do we know whether or not we have sound issues from just laying the microphone down? It might be a good idea just to clip it to your sweater, just, just for good measure. And we'll, well, let's get an answer to that, just so.
Okay.
At some point in time, we'll know. Don't need to know right now, though.
Hi, everyone. My name is Malcolm Voyager, and I work for a community nonprofit in the Illinois Valley. So over in Josephine County. The nonprofit I work for is called the Illinois Valley Community Development Organization, otherwise known as Ivy Can Do. It's a, a big picture nonprofit that has a multitude of different project areas. The, the program areas include arts and culture, business and economic development, community and capacity building, infrastructure, health and education, forests and watershed, and parks and recreation. And so I'm, I'm in charge of the business and economic development side of that, of our nonprofit. And so we have a, we've had a revolving loan fund that's been in existence since two thousand. That's been loans up to twenty-five thousand dollars for small businesses in Southern Oregon. I'm also on the board of the Illinois Valley Chamber of Commerce and various other economic programming. And so we, we put in an application for the peer program for Jackson County, the planning infrastructure, economic revitalization dollars. There were four hundred and twenty-two million, I think, in the state of Oregon. And there were thirteen point six million for Jackson County. So just look here, there. So for our peer application that is specifically for Jackson County, despite the fact that we are based in Josephine County, there were two prongs that were accepted. And one of them is a small business revolving loan fund. Another side of it is a micro enterprise grant program of grants up to fifteen thousand dollars and loans up to fifty thousand dollars. And the grants will be micro enterprises, for exclusively micro enterprises in Jackson County with an emphasis on talent in Phoenix because they were affected most by the fires. And yes, this is disaster relief from fires that happened over four years ago, which is a little bit of an excessive amount of time. We can all agree. So just to acknowledge that. The, and so the revolving loan fund for the peer program will be loans up to fifty thousand dollars at five percent interest, which is pretty well below the prime rate. So it's should be advantageous for some of the local businesses to apply to that. And then the grant program is just free money up to fifteen thousand dollars that is going to be dispersed across two different windows. The first, we're gonna front load the first window, which will be three hundred thousand dollars in grants distributed. And we are working right now with OHCS to finalize all of the outreach materials and application materials. It all has to be approved by OHCS. And they, some of the processes previously have been hindered a little bit by, I think, the amount of federal agency oversight that has to check off what OHCS is doing. But I think that some of that's gonna be mitigated now that the contract has been signed. And I think some of the processes are gonna be expedited now that we're actually getting things underway. And we are looking to get all of our, all of, so we're gonna launch the grant program before the loan program. And we're looking to la- launch the grant program in the early spring because we have to have everything approved by OHCS. And so the way we're gonna do it is we're gonna open up an application window for two to three months. And then at the end of that window, we're going to award the grants. And my wife is pregnant, and I am the lead on this project at my organization, and she's due in February. So that, that's why we're delaying the, the loan program. It's the only reason we're delaying it. And that's gonna be delayed until June.
Until June?
The, the loan program and not the grant program, yeah. We're closing, we're temporarily closing our own revolving loan fund too for a couple of months, like the, for my nonprofit, just because I'm not, I'm not gonna be there for two months. So let me get into this a little bit. So just some of the ways to qualify. The, it's, there's, there's essentially only two ways to qualify. One of them is through various LMI, low to moderate income variables. And then another way is through the urgent need or disaster relief funding. And because this is, this all revolves around HUD, Housing and Urban Development's national objectives. Whether or not a business owner lost something in the fire, they, they still have to fill out the low to moderate income information. I was hoping it was gonna be a thing where if you lost something in the fire, you click yes on our application, and you're automatically qualified for the grants. But that HUD wants to exhaust all of the LMI very, like qualifications first. And if then you don't qualify, then you would get it through urgent need. So for anyone who, who fills out a grant application with us, we're not just being jerks about that. I would, I would prefer if we could just be like, did you lose something in the fire? Yes. Well, then you qualify. That's how common sense would work. But, you know, sometimes the federal government has other plans. So some, just so, so there's some frame of reference. Some of the numbers for the, the LMI qualifications, and these are strictly based on the business owner's tax returns, not the overall business income. But a family of, of one, like the, the income that you would qualify throughout, through the LMI number is forty-nine thousand two hundred. Family of two would be fifty-six thousand two hundred. Family of three, sixty-three thousand two fifty. And that's not household income. That's just the, the business owner's income. So if a business owner who, who owns a micro enterprise, five or fewer employees, let's just say their business makes a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year in, in net, and, and they net a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but they have three employees, and their take home was only forty thousand dollars, they would qualify. So it's just about their, their individual tax returns, whether or not they qualify. Some other ways will be if they're serving an air, a census, an LMI area or census tract of at least fifty-one percent residents in a defined service, in a, in a sense. So census tracts have have low to moderate income percentages. And it just means that the, a certain amount of people that live in that qualify, in that census tract qualifies low to moderate income. And I think there is a census tract in Phoenix that's above fifty-one percent LMI. So if any business owners own a business in that census tract, they would qualify for the grants automatically. Another way is through low to moderate income, job creation or retention. And we're gonna have all of this stuff on our website soon. We have a peer landing page on our website now with, with more information that we're gonna be updating as we go. And this is also a partnership with the Small Business Development Center. They also applied for peer grant funding, and they were awarded seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. They hired Ruthie Painter, and she is contracted twenty hours a week to provide technical assistance for business owners that are looking to apply to our program. So there's documentation that they'll need depending on which way they qualify. And they need to be able to provide things that either their business has or that they has, that they have personally to prove their compliance with the program. And see, yeah, we're, we're currently working on the application form, like I said, for the first round of the grants that are gonna be up. Each grant is up to fifteen thousand dollars. The first round's gonna be three hundred thousand dollars worth of grants. So we're working on that right now. And like I said, OHCS reviews and approves all application and outreach materials. And they've assured us that they're going to be able to expedite that within reason as much as they can. And yeah, just compliance is of the utmost importance to us so that, you know, federal dollars are able to continue flowing into Jackson County, and there's no craziness going on. So we appreciate everyone working with us in that regard. And I think that's pretty much all I have to say. It's just to summarize again. We got peer funding. We were launching two programs, a revolving loan fund up to fifty thousand dollars, that's five percent interest. A grant program up to fifteen thousand dollars. That's just free money. Launching the grant program by launching, I mean, opening up applications in early spring, and then we're gonna distribute the grant funds at the end of a window so everyone has time to apply who wants to apply. And then we have, we're delaying the loan program a little bit until June, just because I'm gonna be on leave. And yeah, there's no one else in my organization who does, who manages the revolving loan fund. So.
Any questions? Or comments? All right. Well, thank you so much for coming, Malcolm, and really great information. Congratulations.
Thank you, Darby.
That's awesome.
Thank you.
And thank you. Yeah, I know it's a long trip for you out here, so we really appreciate.
No, yeah, it's all good. I, yeah, I that was something that I was sure to include, you know, in the grant. I wanted to be able to like come out here and make sure I was able to actually be speak at some of the, the local meetings, you know what I mean?
Yep.
Yeah, instead of zooming in. I'm not a huge Zoom fan personally.
Glad to have you.
Awesome. Yeah, thanks.
Next item on the agenda, reports.
Mayor, members of the council, I have one report under six point one announcing today that the city has received a grant award letter from the, from Business Oregon notifying us of a grant award in the amount of one point five million dollars for the purchase of the property at forty-nine Talent Avenue for the use as a community resource center. The funding is both for the acquisition price and a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for initial remodeling and architectural services. So will, we now await the grant agreement. Not sure how long that will take, several weeks likely. And then we'll, I'm currently working on a plan to secure input on utilization of the building and have reached out to occupants of the current city buildings to see what their interest would be in relocating to that facility.
Can I ask you a quick question about this? I, I know Access has been kind of following along this story. I think you've had a few discussions with them. I think they even put in a letter of support for this grant process. I know there's a lot of people interested in the food pantry. Are you actively having discussions with Access?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thanks.
That's the only report I haven't seen.
All right. Thank you very much.
The police chief is here. She prepared a department update on it, or just, it's in the packet. Have any questions that you might have?
Do you want, are there any comments you want to highlight, chief?
Good evening. I don't really have any comments. I just would like to advise you, this will be a monthly report that we're will be doing moving forward, just highlighting some of the activities that we had to include the customer service survey results. Some of them, they're basically put in there as they were provided. Sometimes we'll have to read out a bit just to keep people's privacy. But, you know, we had a busy month in November with winter time. It's slowing down, tends to slow down a little bit in December. We just wanna really be more open about what we're doing every month. I'll still be doing the annual report every year.
You have any questions?
Anything? Counsel writer? I had a question about something on the form. I love, thank you for laying it all out just so clearly. And the SRO activities demonstrations, what is that?
So when the SRO gives, you know, talks of blasts.
Oh, okay. Yeah.
So activities and incidents. Now, a lot of the things he does is really like mediate problems. So four, the, it says four cases. Those four were reports written that were either like criminal nature, or they were sent. Maybe they, you know, it was a crime, but the school chose to maybe not be a victim, but they still sent those reports to the juvenile hall. There's a tracking method. And so the demonstration, there is more of the community outreach within the school.
Thank you. Thank you. Can I ask a question? I am a big fan of these types of feedback, and I, and I, I love the format that you put. It's just nice and easy to read. I see a couple of things that I, I'm wondering if we can break out arrests and citations to set two separate categories. Is that possible?
Yes.
Okay. And then the other thing is, is I, I also love to see feedback, and I, and I appreciate the fact that you've got feedback of all kinds here. I think that's very transparent. And we, is there, is it possible that you could provide us with data that shows? Like, I, I don't think we need details, and I don't want, I don't want to put that on you, but like, just like like percentages of percentages of feedback that you would consider, you know, feedback that's valuable for areas of improvement, and then the percentage of the feedback that is, you know, validating. Here's why. Because I think you can see trends when that happens. And when you put forth efforts as a department to impact those trends, when we can see the co-inciding trend. So I'm not looking for detail. I'm not looking for what anybody said, but just trends that we can follow. Is that something that wouldn't?
Yes.
Be too hard?
Yeah. So the only, the only time they're given an opportunity to really give their feedback is under the comments section. And so everything else is satisfied, dissatisfied, extremely satisfied, or extremely satisfied, or they don't want to answer. So, you know, we have a section that asks them if they'll answer the demographics. And, you know, they can say yes or no. If they say yes, then it brings them down to another table. And some of those include, you know, their salary, their home situation, if they're homeless, or living with somebody, or own their home, rent their home. And if they're single, marry, their education. So so we get that feedback, and it is actually reported back to us every month in a way that's really easy to read. So I could certainly share all that information as well. I just didn't want to overload you with information.
Yeah. So. This is, this is really great. So I'm hearing you say that you can share the satisfaction dissatisfaction percentages and, and, yeah, good.
Yes. And, and if I recall, don't quote me, but we're in the high eighties.
Yeah, I'm not surprised. You know, one of the things I, I'm getting to a point, one of the things that I used to train on feedback with the company that I worked for was that when you see trends that are especially significant trends, that it, it's also a really good time to talk about what you think those trends were impacted by, because that's the whole idea of the feedback, right, is to, is to reinforce what you're doing. And so if that comes up and it occurs to you to do it at any time, I'd invite you to do that, because I, I love, I love to see trends that are, trends that happen, and then I love to find out what, what impacts those trends.
Absolutely. We hit our year anniversary on this program in September of this year. So I did intend to really do a whole year's data. I just haven't got there yet. So I, and I will say I can't take credit for the format. I, I presented to my admin assistant what I was looking for. I'm not a wizard on the computer, so.
Yeah. Great job. It sounds like you're gonna be able to do year over year stuff too at some point. That's exciting. Let's see, counsel writer?
One last question. Sorry. At what point are they asked to take the survey? Where does that?
When the call is complete. So once the officer clears out the call for service, then they will get a message saying that the call's been completed, and it'll ask for their, if they're willing to take a survey or.
Like a text?
They get, it's all through texts.
Yeah.
Okay. So not every call for service gets a text. So, for example, like maybe a domestic assault. You know, if, if the victim's calling to report like a serious person crime, they will not get text messages in order to protect them. It causes problems. So, so we don't get, all of them don't get sent, but the majority of them do, and it'll tell. When we get the surveys back, it'll tell us what the call was and link us to that case. So you know, there are some people, I mean, we have to be on here, that, that express their displeasure or something. But generally, it's because we couldn't solve their problem for them. You know, we can do many things, but we can't fix everything. So, you know, and I, once in a while, you know, I'll pick up the phone and just say, you know, look, this, this is why this happened. Or if an officer didn't have time to call them because of the case volume, and, you know, the call came in at seven, but they weren't freed up till midnight. Well, I don't know about you, but I don't think I'd want a phone call at midnight if it wasn't emergent. So so the, those are factors. That's where I see kind of the, you know, the less satisfied callers per se. But you know, it's given us the opportunity to reach out and really explain why they're out.
Is that a common practice for departments to survey?
I don't know of other agencies. I know, well, Medford does it, Jackson County has the same, and Ashland and us, all signed up together. So we've been doing it for over a year now. I don't know of any other jurisdictions I've since got on there. But we had to do it through our dispatch center. So it's, you know, when the call is entered, then it will send them. And it also tells them if our call, if our response is delayed. Or, you know, it, it just updates them until somebody actually calls them, unless they know the outcome or clears the call. So I don't know of all agencies. I mean, it would be probably hard to, to give feedback.
Others are, and it's a program that you enrolled in and.
Yeah, it's, I think, like two thousand a year, maybe, as I, but, but, you know, previously we would randomly pick cases and just call, and we'll call people and say, you know, how was your out, how were you satisfied? But frankly, it's time. It's just another thing that we don't really have time for. So.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I always just deeply appreciate it when, when an organization or leadership looks for feedback.
Yeah.
Works off of feedback. I think it's, you know, I mean, on some level, it's, it's just really courageous that you're looking at your organization for ways to either, again, validate or, or improve. So it's.
Yeah. I think it's, it's, you know, I I'd like to say I wasn't surprised by the outcomes of it, because I know our team does a really good job. But there are some things that slip through the cracks, and, you know, we can make it right instead of somebody not thinking we didn't take them serious and then telling ten people, and then tell somebody else. If we can, if we can promote that, that's what it's really about. And, and just the positive feedback that we're getting is, I think, helpful. I share them all with the team on a monthly basis, and, and they like to see them too.
I think that alone makes a difference. I also want to say kudos to the department for a really fun Lights on Bikes night. As usual, your team was very engaging and got in there with the crowd and had a lot of fun lighting up the cars as the front of the, of the, the ride. I know we're not calling it a parade. The ride was spectacular. It was beautiful to see. I wish, I wish everybody could have seen it. It was really pretty and, and a lot of fun. And the li- the lights on the cars really added to it. It was a lot of fun, and they were great.
Well, they did obviously use them all because I sent some of them back, so.
Yeah. Thank you, Keith. I'll send an email to you. Yeah. Counsel buyer?
Just a tiny note. This is great, and it's. Just a tiny note. This is great and it's amazing that we have this in place to, to just be able for us to take it in, but also for, I mean, clearly it's available. It's public record for community members to take into. I'm wondering if we might be able to have something put on our website that encourages people to respond to the survey if they receive a prompt after a call. And just saying how valuable it is to the police department. I think it's one more way to reiterate like, how seriously you take all of that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, we're looking at adding some information to the website and I have somebody that's actually in the process. I probably overloaded them with things that I would like to see on it, but, uh, it's in the works.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Great.
All right. Next item on the agenda is six point three urban renewal report.
Mayor members of the council, one of the report. Uh, we are continuing our efforts, uh, uh, with the current residents at the gateway. Uh, I think we've completed twenty-nine. And bands, we, yeah. We conveyed that twenty-nine of the RVs to uh, current residents. Uh, some have been conveyed to, uh, other fire victims. Uh, as authorized by, uh, Oregon Housing and Community Services. Uh, I believe there are six or seven of the, uh, RVs that are considered uninhabitable. Um, they were appraised, uh, this week, uh, as well, looking at disposing of those. Uh, I think there are seven or so that are vacant, uh, that the residents have relocated elsewhere. So we're getting down to close to less than twenty, uh, of the, uh, RVs that remain occupied with no disposition yet. Uh, the excess case, caseworkers are working diligently to, um, find alternative housing for the remaining, uh, residents there. And they are optimistic about uh, accomplishing that by spring, sometime in the spring. We'll let you know that, uh, uh, we will be bringing to both the, uh, Urban Renewal Agency and the City Council a discussion about the relationship between Tura and the city now that we, uh, have the, uh, peer grant in place and we're going to be talking further about the, uh, development scenario for the site. Now here we have a situation where the property is owned by Tura. Uh, the infrastructure grant is, uh, was made to the city. Uh, so there needs to be some contractual relationships there uh, to enable the project to go forward on that site. Uh, and then have a discussion about city and Tura respective roles going forward uh, in the redevelopment of the project. So I wanted you to be aware that that's coming up, uh, for discussion as well. Nothing else.
Any questions? Um, on Tura, uh, I also, um, I know that sometimes documents are hard to find, um, but I also want to just double check to make sure that you guys are aware that there was an IGA. I wanna say maybe twenty eighteen or so, I mean, I'm on anybody, but, um, uh, there was an IGA, uh, update at some point in time that talked about the reimbursement rate from county over the middle to the city for some of this that. And, and I think that's the latest copy of the IGA. Uh, Council Penomar?
I remember that. So it would have to be twenty nineteen or later.
Okay, so it sounds to me like more like twenty nineteen.
Great, thank you.
Sure. Um, okay, and the next item on the agenda is, uh, the consent calendar. Uh, item seven point one through item seven point nine. Is there anything on the consent calendar that anybody wants to pull out for discussion? Council Penomar?
Um, not to pull out, I just have a question on the check register. Um, I'm just wondering about the Business Oregon, check to Business Oregon for two hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars. I'm just not remembering. That would be.
Same question.
That was from Business Org.
Have to get back with you on that one. I don't know off the top of my head. Would you like me to report at the next meeting or would you like, um?
Just an email would be great.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yeah, whatever suits you.
Um, okay, anything else? All right, uh, I will entertain a motion to adopt, uh, the consent calendar.
I think Tessa remembers.
Oh, Tessa?
I remembered. It's upon payment.
It's upon payment.
Yes.
Okay.
Right, thank you.
Council Buyers?
I move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing not in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is eight point one, the formation of state park advisory committee staff report.
Mayor members of the council, uh, the mayor had recommended the formation of an advisory committee to provide input to the city and the contractor as we proceed with the design build for the old town skate park rehabilitation project. This would be a limited duration committee that would be one or two times to provide input as the project moves forward. Previously, the city had determined through a public process that the existing design be retained and the rehabilitation consists of a concrete overlay. The space occupied by the skate park is very confined and additional features may or may not be possible. The recommended size of the committee is five and it's further recommended that the committee membership include younger members of the local skateboarding community. The contractor may wish to discuss the project with users that they encountered uh, onsite during the design phase. Uh, applications would be accepted through the city's normal committee allocation process. So the motion would be to create an Old Town Skate Park Advisory Committee of limited duration consisting of five members, uh, that would be, um, appointed by the mayor with the consent of the city council to advise the city council and the state park rehabilitation contractor during the design phase of the project.
I, um, just have one comment before we entertain a motion. Actually, if anybody else has questions as well, um, I'm wondering if we could change the size of the committee from five to five to seven. And I say that because I'm hoping to ask a council member, um, to apply as, um, as, um, since this is not gonna be an advisory to the council, uh, I would like to see somebody on, on that board that can preside. Um, and, uh, either somebody from the council or somebody from the parks commission or both. Uh, but I'd like to see two of those positions held by, my preference would be somebody from the council and somebody from the parks commission. I just think it would be valuable in, in actually running the meetings. Does, is there, is there any conflict with that?
No.
Yep. And then, um, yeah, and then that would leave us room to get a couple of kids on there and, and I know that there's a couple of community members that were um, part of the skateboard community when it was built. Uh, so I wanna make sure that there's gonna be left enough room, but if we say five to seven, if we don't get there, we can always do it with five. Does that make sense? Yeah. Okay. Um, so that would be my only suggestion, uh, thank you. You captured everything very well. Um, just that the motion would be, uh, to consider of five to seven members. Uh, Council Buyers?
Um, I move to create an Old Town Skate Park Advisory Committee of limited duration consisting of seven members appointed by the city council to advise the city council and skate park rehabilitation design and building contractor during the design phase of the project.
Council Penomar?
Yeah, I just wanted to suggest the rewording. I think we wanted five to seven and also as the city manag- sorry. It was five to seven is what you were asking for, not, I think that's what you said. Oh, I only heard five. Okay. Um, or seven. Oh, did you just say?
I did say seven, but I can say.
Five to seven. And just the other part, um, appointed by the mayor with the consent of the council.
Okay, sure. Yeah. Um, do you want me to restate all of that or I agree to those suggested changes?
I would just go ahead and read the, read the, re- restate the motion.
Okay. I move to create an Old Town Skate Park Advisory Committee of limited duration consisting of five to seven members appointed by the mayor to advise the city council and the skate park rehabilitation design and building contractor during the design phase of the project.
So I'm just gonna say one quick thing. Sorry, uh, it, 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 our, our charter requires us to appoint by the mayor with consent of the council. So neither, neither body can do it by themselves. Um, I can't do it without you. You can't do it without me. So appointed by the mayor with consent of the council, I think is what, what we're trying to do. Oh.
I'm going to create an Old Town Skate Park Advisory Committee of limited duration consisting of five to seven members appointed by the mayor by, with the consent of the council to advise the city council and the skate park rehabilitation design and building contractor during the design phase of the project.
Second.
Yeah, yeah. That was brilliant. Um, okay, we have a motion and a second to create an Old Town State Park Advisory Committee of limited duration consisting of five to seven members appointed by the mayor with consent of the council to advise the city council and the skate park rehabilitation design build contractor during the design phase of the project. Um, is there any further discussion? Dave?
They're working on the contract, the contractor in council and community might wanna know that in the building of the contract is at least two, maybe even three public meetings for, for them to get in from the public. So that's an addition. For this group, so. I think that would help them to know.
They could substitute. I mean, this group could substitute for them.
Yeah, my understanding is that this group would act as the key stakeholders. Yeah, just because we've gone through so much public process already. Um, and then it isn't really about changing any plans necessarily. It's just about having, yeah, having a group of people that have been so interested in participating in the process. Is that? Yeah, okay, all right. Uh, Council Buyers, just to that point, that creates an opportunity in a public meeting for people to come and make comments, for sure.
Right.
Yeah, cause all the meetings are gonna be in public anyway, right? So, um, all the meetings, the limited meetings, I should say. Um, all right.
Anything else?
Uh, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, the next item on the agenda is item eight point two, which is the award of advanced metering infrastructure contracts. Staff report, please.
Yeah, I'm gonna enter in here before you get started. This was a collaborative effort of, uh, the Public Works Finance and Finance Department. Uh, that, uh, to put this together, you may recall that there was an earlier RFP that was issued and a limited number of proposals received. Uh, and we ult- and the city ultimately rejected those proposal. Uh, so we developed a new RFP, uh, that was, uh, more comprehensive, uh, and garnered a larger response. So, uh, with that sort of um, history, I'll defer to Yogi. Sounds like I was gonna pick up the mantle and carry it on from here.
Sure, thank you, Gary. Um, good evening, um, mayor and the council members. So, um, the city of Tallinn issued a report for proposal on October eleventh, twenty twenty-four for the installation of AMI infrastructure. This includes communication radio antennas and the upgrade of approximately twenty-two hundred existing water meters. This project, um, aims to automate the system's streamlined billing process and improve leak detection, ultimately benefiting both the city and its residents by promoting long-term water conservation. The city received three bids, uh, from Ferguson, H D Fowler and the Mountain State Pipe and Supply. Following interviews with each vendor and a thorough scoring process outlined by our consultant, Jacob's Engineering. Ferguson was determined to have the highest score. Their proposal includes a total life cycle cost of lead over one point four million with an estimated upfront cost of seven hundred and twenty-three thousand, one hundred and seventy-five dollars. This includes the installation of all the meters as well. Given the time constraints for allocating ARPA funding, it is imperative that a contract is finalized by the end of this calendar year. The re- recommendation for staff is, uh, that the city council prove a motion to award the AMI project to Ferguson Waterworks for an amount not to exceed seven hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. This amount has a little bit contingency building. It's less than one percent and this is the amount that are allocated by ARPA funding.
Are there any questions of staff? Council Penomar?
Yeah, thanks for this. Um, I intend to vote for this. This looks like a great deal. I just wanna understand the finances of it. So seven hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars is coming from ARPA, AR- ARPA funding. And, uh, one question is how much is that total ARPA funding that we have available to us? And I, that's gonna come under another, um, item later on in the agenda. Um, but I also want to understand the total life cycle cost of the meters. Um, I believe, and I'm just looking for confirmation, that this was built into our water rates and this is gonna come out of our, uh, enterprise fund. Um, with the water fund essentially, and it, it's already been taken care of as far as the rate structure restructuring that we've done.
I think so, except that, uh, I think, um, metaphor, the water commission just reserve, uh, rate.
Right.
But I'm gonna.
I meant, yeah, and we've been talking about that too. So besides Medford Water Commission doing their thing, apart from that, we've already planned for this. Is, is it just what I wanted?
I think the more appropriate is for Tessa to answer you this question if you don't mind.
Oh, that's fine.
Yes, we, uh, we have planned for that, um, rate action this fiscal year.
Great, thank you.
And we'll be looking at it again in, uh, twenty-five, twenty-six.
Um, but our, our, our rate structure has incorporated this, um, as we, in the full life cycle of the water.
For the fiscal year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Answered yes. Keep in mind that the rate increase by Medford Water Commission was not anticipated.
Right. Which will necessitate us going back to water rates again. Right.
Right.
But if that didn't happen, we would be totally taken care of.
Right.
But a portion of the rate increases were from Medford Water Commission was considered, right? So it's not the full. Yeah, okay. Council Coay?
Yeah, thank you for this. Um, is how many, what percentage of all meters in talent is that twenty-two hundred? I know some were replaced after the fire.
Yes, yeah, you are absolutely correct, Council Coay. I, on top of my head, I think they're approximate about seventeen hundred. So that would be one, eighty percent.
Any more questions? All right, I'll entertain a motion.
There.
Uh, Council Coay? Thank you.
Um, I move to approve to award the AMI project Ferguson Waterworks for an amount not to exceed seven hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
Second. Where is that recommended? Page forty-two. I'm on page forty-two. Did you read it from the recommendations?
It's under recommendations.
And you're not reading it from a motion anywhere?
No.
Okay.
It just says recommendations.
All right, so we have a motion and a second to award the contractor Ferguson Waterworks for an amount not to exceed seven hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is eight point three contract approval for town hall restoration. Steph?
This, uh, report will. This, uh, report will be presented by Finance Director, Tessa Delaunay.
Great, thank you very much. The city of Talent's historic town hall is still closed due to the ongoing restoration and the need for the foundation repairs, which are critical to safely reoccupy the building. The foundation repairs need to happen before finishing the fire restoration activities to not duplicate efforts and expenses. City staff plans to move forward, plans to award the foundation repair contract to Osland Group, selected after a competitive RFQ process. The contract must be executed by December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four to secure funding from the American Rescue Plan Act, also known as ARPA. The Foundation Design Bill project has a budget of not to exceed two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The final costs depend on the extent of the foundation work needed and the building's intended future use. With that said, it is important to note that the historic town hall is the city of Talent's largest cultural and historic artifact and is on the National Register of Historic Places. It enhances aesthetic appeal to the downtown core. Depending on its future use, it could be used as a tourist attraction, attracting visitors and generating revenue for the local economy. The estimated cost of restoring the building versus new construction is estimated to be a hundred and fifty-two dollars per square foot versus over three hundred per, three hundred dollars per square foot. A recent example would be the Asante Building at the, at forty-nine Talon Avenue. Its replacement costs are currently valued at three hundred and thirty-four dollars per square foot. This does not include land acquisition and systems development charges. Staff recommends that the city council direct the city manager to execute the design build contract with Osland Group prior to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four to secure the use of ARPA grant funding. Thank you. Any questions?
Counselor Panomar?
Yeah, so does that, so that's seven hundred and fifty, two hundred and fifty, a million dollar in ARPA funding, so that's all we have, uh, to spend and we have to spend it by the end of the year.
Correct, and it has to be.
Contract.
In contract form, that's the, that's important because that's something we just recently learned. Um, we do, we have the one point two million that we've already collected for ARPA, and this happened a number of years ago. Two hundred and forty thousand is for the skate park. Seven hundred and twenty-five thousand is for the water meter replacement, um, plan and two hundred and thirty-five thousand for the historic town hall foundation.
Our follow-up question?
Yeah, so the balance of that is coming out of which fund?
This will be the, you mean, as far as like?
The balance, balance of from the two hundred and fifty, you said two hundred and thirty-five thousand was gonna go from ARPA.
Correct.
So the balance of fifteen thousand is coming.
To be determined, it's possibly out of the CIP.
Okay.
Any other questions? Uh, okay, I'll, let's. Hang on one second, off my screen. Um, I will entertain a motion. Counselor Panomar?
I move to direct the city manager to execute the design build contract with Osland Group before December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four.
Okay.
We have a motion and a second to direct the city manager to execute the design build contract with Osland Group before December thirty-one, twenty twenty-four. Is there any, did I read the right motion? Yeah, um, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed?
Thank you.
So if, uh, if I could ask for the council's indulgence, and I have a couple thank yous, I'd like to, uh, say before we move on to unfinished business, um, I do have something in my office that I need to get. Um, but, uh, I'll start with, uh, thanking Commissioner Dauder for your service to our community. We appreciate, uh, your dedication to us, uh, we appreciate the interest you've carried, uh, we appreciate the messaging um, from our council meetings to the commission. I listen to the meetings, uh, on occasion and, and I, I've appreciated, um, your conveyance of some of our interests here. And, um, I, I, I also want to say that having a liaison from the county to the city has been very valuable, um, even, even when, not everybody agrees on everything. It's still very valuable to hear from each other and, and know, uh, know what's going on. I, I would hope, uh, someday that, uh, and I probably were missing not inviting you to do this, um, but this liaison would be great to have it at Commissioners Report once in a while. So if pass that on to your, uh, to your next, next assignment here, that would be really great. Um, but anyway, I want to say thank you on behalf of the city of Talent. We really appreciate your dedication to us. I'm gonna go to my office real quick and get something. We're supposed to do this during the break. Too busy chit-chat, chatting. Hey there. I also want to say thank you, Councilor Brighter, for your great service to our community. We really appreciate um, the viewpoint that you brought for our city and the decisions you've helped us make and your dedication to our community.
I was not expecting this. You so much, these are so beautiful. Um, it's really been such an honor and thank you. I'm, I'm really sad to be finished here, but I'm so excited for the future for you all.
You're just being available for other efforts, didn't you hear?
I'm, I'm already planning on applying for those, yeah. I'm, it's been such an honor and just, yeah, talent is just such a special place. And, um, I'm really excited for the future for you all.
Thank you, Councilor Brighter.
Thank you.
Been great working with you.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, everybody, for indulging the, yeah. Um, so with that, we'll go ahead and move on to new business. Uh, item nine point one is Resolution twenty-four dash one zero four dash R, acknowledging Jackson County Elections Office canvas of the vote for, oh my, my timing is perfect for this. Um, for general election of November fifth, twenty twenty-four, staff.
Mayor members of the council standing in for the city recorder, uh, tonight. Uh, the city council reviews and canvases the results of elections via resolution as part of the state election certification process. For the general election of November fifth, twenty twenty-four, election reporting is prepared and distributed by the Jackson County Elections Office. The county clerk will deliver in writing via mail and email a notice of certification and a statement of votes, uh, to the City of Talent Elections Officer, that being the city reporter. After the city council canvases the results, elected candidates will receive a certificate of election from the count, from the city recorder, indicating the seat and duration of the new term. According to the City of Talent Charter, an oath of office will take place the first council meeting of the new year in twenty twenty-five. So the action tonight would be to, uh, move to adopt Resolution twenty twenty-four dash one zero four dash R, acknowledging the abstracted votes from the Jackson County Elections Office for the general election of November fifth, twenty twenty-four.
Any questions? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion. Counselor Coe?
I move to adopt Resolution twenty twenty-four dash one zero four dash R, acknowledging the abstract of votes from Jackson County Elections Office for general election of November fifth, twenty twenty-four.
Second, we have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution twenty twenty-four dash one zero four dash R, acknowledging the abstract of votes from the Jackson County Elections Office for general election of November fifth, twenty twenty-four. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Resolution.
What's this? Oh, it's a resolution, thank you, thank you. Uh, roll call, please. Here? Yes. Yeah, I don't have a vote. Boy. I jumped on that path. Item nine point two is contract approval for the funding of, um, the wildlife or the wildfire mitigation work.
This is an invoice that we just received from Briarwood, uh, Brierville Fire and Forestry of Ashland, uh, for the initial work that they're doing, uh, on the fire mitigation project. Uh, and the work involves things such as, uh, hauling large wood debris to staging area, uh, mulching, uh, smaller debris, trucking off larger logs, uh, clearing non-native, flammable vegetation such as blackberries. Um, the labor involved with that, the equipment that is involved, such as a skid steer and an excavator, uh, and the total amount for this initial billing is ninety-four thousand and eight dollars. So we're requesting a motion this evening to authorize the payment of, uh, it, of an invoice in the amount of ninety-four thousand and eight dollars to Brierville Fire and Forestry.
Any questions? Counselor Panomar?
Sorry, what was the name of the contractor?
Brierville, B R I E R.
And this isn't a, uh, this is not an approval of a contract, I misstated that, this is just approval of the funding.
A payment.
Yeah, okay. Alright, uh, I'll entertain a motion. Counselor Panomar?
I move to approve, uh, sorry, I, I move to approve, um, uh, I move to authorize the payment, uh, of an invoice, uh, in the amount of ninety-four thousand and eight dollars to Brierville. Thanks.
Fire and forestry, thank you. We have a motion and a second to authorize the payment of an invoice in the amount of ninety-four thousand and eight dollars uh, payable to Brierville Fire and Forestry?
Yeah.
Um, alright, any questions? Hearing, or any deliberation? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I just want to give credit where credit's due. I know the work that's happening on this is over by, uh, has been over by Suncrest and some of those areas over there. I did hear comments from, um, from a resident in that area that just saying the praises of, of Gao Ying and, and her great interface with the community down there in this work and just wanted to make sure that, uh, you were recognized publicly for, for that appreciation. Thank you, Gao Ying, for the great work that you do for our city. We appreciate you. Uh, item number ten is commission and committee reports. There are none. Oh, wait a minute, no, I'm sorry. I don't want to hear it from me.
You could just keep it to yourself.
Oh my God, you guys are so understanding. Um, alright, uh, Councilor Byers, what have you got to add?
Well, so Parks, um, is already beginning their discussions of what community surveys have indicated are the next priorities since the skate park project is, well, um, it's got a lot of movement now. Thank you, Gary, for getting that ball rolling. Um, and so I know there's been discussion of fundraising of different sorts, everything, and new plans have been made. They're definitely in a research mode, information gathering mode right now. I do know that they'd love to hear from perhaps a past Parks Commissioner about past fundraising efforts and how that applied. I know that a big community priority is getting, um, usable tennis pickleball courts back, which the Parks Commission is curious about. Does the city have any sort of, um, policy around allowing someone to sponsor that project and thereby have their name put on that community asset? So, that's just question, questions I'm putting out to, uh, past Parks Commissioner and also knowing that I'll be following up with email to, uh, the city manager about that.
Yep. Yeah, I feel like, um, I feel like the city manager and probably, uh, you know, city manager and his team uh, maybe could attend a meeting and, and dedicated to, um, dedicated to talking about the funding, the funding plan for not just that, but maybe even the whole master plan amendment.
Yeah, I think so. And I know the Parks Commission would be really excited to have that conversation. They're very enthusiastic about getting other big line items checked off and understanding both the current, um, financial capacity of the city and wanting to figure out if there's a way where they can help get some other balls rolling.
I would add, there have in the past been fundraising efforts, aside from grant writing efforts, there have been just out and out fundraising efforts. Uh, we did a lot of fundraising to, when we created and started the, uh, recreation program that we ran for about three years in the community. Um, I know rules change over time, uh, but I think there's probably examples in the, in our background uh, of how the city was able to process funds that were raised and community fundraisers and that ended up funding projects of the city.
We'll bring you some ideas.
That's great. Thanks, Gary. Alright. Anybody else? Uh, I'm gonna go down the line here. Uh, did you attend the last planning meeting?
Um, just a, a study session they had last week.
On the, uh?
They call it the timber.
Yeah.
Mast timber?
Mast timber. Anything, anything you want to throw out there?
No, it's sort of like, uh, prefab houses, but maybe it's a way, some discussion about maybe changing some setbacks to, uh, allow like converting, um, alley projects.
Great, thank you. Alright, uh, Counselor Panomar?
Um, so I missed the meeting for Together for Talent and I haven't had a chance to, um, listen to it yet, so I don't have a report there. Um, I do have a report back from, um, the, the Rogue Valley Metropolitan Planning Organization. Um, so the, of the policy committee, um, so this deals with federal transportation dollars and, um, due to an act of the legislature last year, uh, federal funding that the, uh, municipalities would be competing and the county would be competing for, um, was shifted to use gas tax instead. And the, the, the policy committee's been deciding how do we divvy up that money, uh, which is roughly, um, it's like one point three, one point four million a year. So what the policy committee decided that it would be distributed based on population, but with a floor of fifty thousand dollars. So what that means to talent is talent beginning in fiscal year twenty twenty-eight, so checks getting cut in October twenty twenty-seven, fifty thousand dollars in additional gas tax money for the following three years, um, per year. Um, this might change by an act of the legislature and the next session, transportation is supposed to be a big deal. But as far as we know, um, this will be the way it is for, for the next, um, cycle. And I think this was something that Gao Ying also supported, um, being part of the technical advisory committee for the RV MPO. It was active in those meetings, and I just wanted to say I'm so glad to have, um, that there's a presence there, uh, with the MPO because I think, um, what may, remains is what's called CMAC, uh, money, which has to do with, um, yeah, air quality and the CM is, um, congestion mitigation. I think, uh, we might be in a good position for our ODOT project on Krill Road that is a connection to, uh, the gateway, um, to compete for that.
The bike path, isn't it?
Bike path, yeah, on the green, yeah, on the green. Yeah, Greenway Gateway, you know it. Okay. Right, so, um, we could be in a good position to, to get some of that money. So there's some nice transportation, um, financial news, uh, for us.
That is great news, and it is true that when we have a representative on the staff involved, uh, we get, uh, better results. Um, I do, I, I did mention to Gary that we'd like to have a conversation coming up. You noted for an upcoming. You noted for an upcoming report to talk a little bit about the type of crossing that, to bring that up, make sure that that becomes part of that conversation. Because it was quite a conversation when we first talked about it. What, what kind of crossing do we need there? All right, Councilor Coley?
Yeah, Urban Forestry met last week. There's still a couple of projects ongoing, finishing up the master plan, which feels like it's taking forever, but supposedly it's very close to being done. And then the other smaller project is updating our approved street tree list. That should be coming before council very soon. The next urban forestry meeting would be on Christmas, so we're not going to meet until the new year. And then we had also discussed at our last council meeting of having a study session with urban forestry. We talked about that, so looking forward to getting that scheduled. And we'll also bring forward a recommendation to host Arbor Day. Still working out a location for that and size of the event, so, yeah.
I read the minutes from November 13th and they were talking about doing fundraising for Arbor Day. Is that still happening?
Still, I think we're shifting gears on what to do for Arbor Day.
Okay, all right. If, if fundraising does come up again, will you check in with Gary and make sure that, because I do know that there's a lot of hoops to jump through to, you know, make sure that the funds come through the city, blah, blah, blah. If that's even something that the city can still do. Like I said, rules change over the years, so I don't even know what that looks like anymore. Okay, thanks, great report. Any, anybody else? All right. I did not make the last planning meeting, but what he said. So the next item on the agenda is other business. A review of the look ahead and, and then, so I'll go ahead and start with anybody that has other business and we'll, we'll finish with a view, a review of the look ahead. Councilor Panamara?
Yeah, so I was looking around on, on the county assessor's website. The, the information about the property taxes is in. And I don't know if they've notified the city yet. But what the, what the reports are showing is that, that we should get, city should get 1.7 million, which is higher than what we expected. I think there's, I think it's like an eight or nine percent increase. Property taxes pretty much go up three, for guaranteed to go up three percent every year, but with rebuilds and all this stuff. And people like me are paying much higher taxes than we would have. But, yeah, so, so that's happening. And I'm also just, just wondering if, if we're going to need to do, I noticed that the beginning balance is a million dollars higher than what we thought, which I think in the general fund, the portion that goes to general funding exceeds the 10% for a supplemental budget. But I'm wondering if that beginning balance even counts. I, I didn't research that towards the supplemental budget. So I'm just wondering, I'm, I'm seeing, you know, kind of good numbers.
Affirmative. I'm looking, I'm looking forward to that. Thanks. Thank you, Councilor. I just have one item for other business. As meeting protocols have become more onerous, especially around some of the more recent changes with videotaping and Zoom, blah, 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 blah. We've had quite a bit of conversation about the process for subcommittees of committees. And, and just whether or not that's even a necessity. So in the past, we've had several different types of committees. A subcommittee being a portion of a standing committee that breaks off to do separate work. They might be looking into pickleball courts or something like that. And it just allows them, people that are really interested to focus on it and the rest of the people just to take advisory about it. But with all of the challenges of trying to notify meetings and get them recorded and all of those things, there's been some discussion about whether or not subcommittee processes are, should continue. When it comes to subcommittees and, and you know, we have, we have subcommittees, we have ad hoc committees and we have the standing committees. When it comes to the subcommittee work, the question that we're weighing is, is the value of creating a breakoff team that could otherwise function as part of the larger team? Does it outweigh or does it, is there a return on all of the other stuff that we have to do to notify their meetings, to make sure that they've submitted their minutes, to make sure that we're able to try, try to get their meetings online if, if that's possible or, or try to prove whether or not that threshold is something that's achievable for our community? Or do we just ask our, our committees not to make subcommittees and just do the work at the committee level? And I think that's worth a discussion. Let's get it, if, if everybody believes it's worth a discussion, we should get it on an agenda so that we can, we can decide how we want to move forward into 2025 with whether or not we want subcommittees. And, or whether or not we want to allow subcommittees, I guess is really what this boils down to. And so hopefully, everybody will have a chance to think about maybe where maybe some of us are missing the value of having a subcommittee. So that, that would be the discussion is, does the, is, does the value outweigh the, the amount of effort and the amount of additional, you know, transparency stuff that, that's, that's becomes more and more required as time goes on? So I think that's a good, a good point to talk about. So if we can queue that up on the look ahead at some point in time, that would be great. Does anybody object to that? Councilor Panamara?
Yeah, not objecting. I just think it's really great timing because we're going to get some training in January about public, yeah, public meetings. I think there is something about subcommittees or advisory committees, if they're actually advising the body in terms of taking action versus just kind of investigating or something. I think there might, I thought I read that there was some sort of threshold about whether public, public meeting law would apply or not.
Yeah, and the concern being, yes, and so that, I guess that's a question that needs to be answered. My understanding is that if there's a subcommittee and they're meeting on the business of the city, they're required to notify their, their meetings and, and they're required to record them and all of that stuff. So just having some clarification around that. So if you have any detailed questions, can we submit them to Dave? And Dave, you can fill them for the, yeah. Yeah. And then that said, there's still the advisory committees, advisory committees for either the council or to a committee, a standing committee or commission, triggers the appointment process. So being judicious about that as well is, I think, worth having a, a good discussion about. Not, not to say that I don't think we should have advisory committees. I think they're valuable, especially in planning land use issues. But, yeah. It comes with, it comes with a lot of, yeah, staff capital. So we should probably kind of get a better understanding of that as a team. And the look ahead?
We put the look ahead, we've added a few things in there. If there are other items that we don't have in the look ahead, please let us know. So we can get them calendared and, and assigned out to the appropriate staff person. I wanted to let you know tonight that for the meeting of January 15th, you will have very likely a series of documents, resolutions, policy documents on things like ethics and policies with respect to records, all being generated out of the PEAR program. There are, as I recall, there are about a dozen policy documents that need to be adopted in some form by the city council as a part of the conditions of approval on the agreement. We've met this past week for about six hours with the PEAR staff and their consultant. You go over all of those requirements and details. RV cog is preparing a lot of that material under our administrative contract with them. And they'll be working with City Recorder to put all of that material together. And we're targeting January 15th, that's trying to have all of that wrapped up. And it, we're also writing all of those in a fashion so that they not only apply to the PEAR project, but also the, 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 the 49 talent athlete project. So they don't have to do it all.
I have a question, Gary. On January 15th, we're going to discuss the gateway murals. And one of the things that I am, have already approached members of the Public Arts Committee is to make a recommendation on the disposition of the gateway murals. I know that EPAC is authorized to be working on the OSTA project. And there's early discussions that reforming that as some sort of public art installation might, might be a good way to go. Also acknowledging and recognizing that TORA currently owns those murals. Just trying to figure out, you know, a recommendation for like reconfiguring it for an art project somewhere, an art installation somewhere else.
That's good. Yeah, we are getting to the point now where we need to make some decisions about the disposition of things that will remain on the property after the trailers. And the murals are one of them.
That recommendation might also come with some, some funding discussion about how to impact that and how to affect that. Some out, you know, some grant funding that might be available for us to, for us to do that. For us being the city in general, yeah. I mean, I don't know who would actually execute it, but that's what they want to make a recommendation on. Okay, thank you. Anything else? Councilor Coley?
Yeah, February 5th, we're having a study session that says elm blight, which is a tree disease. We've also been approached by Oregon Department of Forestry about having a presentation on Emerald Ashbore for city council. I can't remember if they communicated with Barry. Or not, but I wonder if that, if that is.
I wanted to work out a date for that.
February 5th, apparently.
Oh, elm blight. There's another topic to add.
Emerald Ashbore is the one that we wanted to have a presentation for you all, for us.
Well, the Emerald Ashbore, is it known or voted?
Elm blight is a disease, but Emerald Ashbore is the one that we're currently concerned about. There's all sorts of tree diseases out there.
Are they able to, so when we, when we put those on a regular meeting, the presentation time allotted is 15 minutes. Are they able to do that?
When I communicated them initially, he said they had a longer presentation. I asked if they had a shorter one. He said yes. So if there was other content for that study session, it could be shorter, but.
Yeah, because it, sometimes it makes sense to just do the 15 minute presentation and then if council wants to do a study session to add it, to, to schedule, schedule a study session.
Yeah.
And then I'm just speaking in general terms on any topic, not, not necessarily about this topic, which, which we already have lined up, but.
Potentially too, we could do this February 5th study session as the one with urban forestry includes the EAP Emerald Ashbore presentation in that. That's information that they would appreciate too.
Yeah.
Gary about it?
Good idea.
I have a feeling that roles and responsibilities is going to be a long conversation. It is with every committee that we've ever done it with, so. Yeah. Councilor Brighter?
Though I won't be here. Is there a plan for another study session following up tonight's? Or what are y'all thinking moving forward with that? Interesting.
There's not a plan yet.
Okay.
To develop one, then you can.
Okay.
To add it.
Okay.
More to talk about. See, I'm trying to get a sense of legislative legislation. Is that made? In form of that discussion too?
Okay.
Councilor Panamara?
Yeah, if we do find time, I'd, I'd love to get Rogue Retreat here, Sam from Rogue Retreat or, and/or, you know, continuum of care, street nurses to get, you know, talking more towards solutions and how we could be part of those kinds of solutions. If, if it's regional, I, I think that's, that's. So I'd be interested.
You know, I, just since you brought it up and I forgot to ask it earlier. I thought there, when the continuum of care assembled in early, earlier, like I want to say, maybe, I don't know, what was it, seven years ago or something like that? If anybody knows, yeah. And I thought that was kind of part of the plan, that they were going to create a regional, regional solution that all of, all the cities could participate in. I remember a comment being made, I think it was coming out of Medford, that said, you know, they were, they were criticizing the opposite, that the smaller, the smaller communities don't have to participate because they don't have the challenges. And, and this would, this would get everybody as part of the participation. I don't know what happened with that, but it seems like, seems like they were headed down that road, but it doesn't, I mean, seven years later, I, I don't know if the fire interrupted that or if COVID interrupted that or. Do, have. Yeah. Okay. Because I think they were leading some discussions around, around a regional solution, but I could be wrong. I just, that's on my. Yeah. We used to have a staff member on it. Yeah, so.
I would also be curious about the connection with the Community Resource Center. Just given the name, like what, how that will, if, if that will tie into any of this or if that will be, yeah, to sort of how, what tie in that might have. And, and maybe it doesn't, but maybe there's, yeah, I think just given the, the name of the project, what that looks like.
I, I think that's a really good point. Because one thing, where we're at right now, correct me if I'm wrong, Gary, is we got a grant to fund the remodel of a building and the ownership of the building that we will be leasing out to CBOs to conduct this work. So I think identifying the CBO that, that might be able to do some of this work would be a, a good place to start because then, then perhaps they can be engaged in, in your fact finding. And so I think it would be less like, less of what we would decide to do and more of finding an organization that could address some of those issues. I mean, certainly there are some, you know, already in our community. But, you know, obviously the food pantry comes to mind and, and, but they, you know, that, that's more food vulnerability. But I think RAC does some of that work and even.
And/or I would wonder if as that plays out and as we see what, what resources are there, I guess there will be resources there either way. Maybe then, I'm not sure how tied into, I'm not sure if it's officially due because of the grant is, is called Community Resource, if it has an official name. If that has just been something internally that we've been using or possibly thinking of how to make sure that it's really identifying what that space is. Because if there aren't those, if, if there isn't someone that moves in there that's able to provide some of that, it may cause confusion. So just, I think, as things play out, kind of seeing how that.
Well, that was the grant project name.
Okay.
We're not married to that name.
Okay.
It's the grant project. There is a definition in the application of what will take place at that location. So if, if that's going to change, we'll maybe go back to the.
Yeah, I don't think we, I mean, the name can change, but not the use because we're bound by the grant agreement. Yeah. And so, I mean, you're just talking about a name change that more accurately describes the purpose?
Yes, I just see the potential for confusion.
Which is, I think, already happened, yeah.
So if, I think it would be great to start with, yes, trying to get groups in there that can, you know, provide some of these services or resources. But if that weren't the case, then, yeah, just, I think, taking a look at that name and just making sure it really reflects or it doesn't cause confusion as somewhere that people are referred to. as somewhere that people are referred to, you know, what are the, who does get referred there for resources and how does, what do those resources look like? Just, yeah, that's just a thought that I'm.
Yeah, I think the, the confusion I'm seeing emerge now too, uh, does lend itself, I, I, this is probably my last comment on this, but it, it, I think there is some clarification that can be had that we're, uh, the city is not providing services, but that we're providing space for services. And if there's a way to clarify that.
Right.
In the naming, uh, that might be.
Right.
Yeah.
Also, along those lines, um, wondering about the hours and that I'm sure is in agreement with the tenants there. But is this something that's open during certain hours? And since it's not, um, you know, run by the city, is there an ask of those tenants to be open during certain hours for the community?
We need to form a tenants group.
Sure.
To identify who's going to occupy.
Sure.
What space and what the hours are going to be and what level of maintenance is going to be.
Sure.
Required to provide. There's a lot.
Yeah.
That needs to happen before it's occupied.
And you don't have to reinvent the wheel, right? You have a good example of this in Brookings. I think I remember you saying when this whole thing started, right? Then you do something like this in Brookings. That's great. I guess, uh, that brings up a question for me, Gary, is as we, uh, as you form this tenants group and, um, and you start to form the policies of how all of that works, some of that will be public process, I would imagine.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, good. Okay. All right. Anybody, anything else? Council Penamara?
I should have asked this problem several meetings ago. The building and one hundred and fifty thousand words architecture and was there any thought about putting solar in there? Same money on electricity that's going to.
Not within the budget.
It's not within the budget.
Right.
But there might.
But there are, there may be other, there may be opportunities to secure additional funding for rebuilding.
Okay.
For supporting that.
I just wanted to put a button there about it. Sorry, Gary. Thanks.
Is, how big is the lot? I mean, I, I know the building is quite big, but how big is the lot? How big is that tax lot? Do you know?
I don't remember.
Okay, but it's pretty big, isn't it? Yeah, because I'm like 1.35 million dollars. I, I don't know. Is that how it assessed? Did it assess at 1.35?
Appraised value.
Yeah, okay, all right.
Would be nice to see a picture of the, because of that shared parking lot with other things. It'd be nice to see what.
If there's expand, is it, if it's expandable, if we could build other things on there if we wanted to, like that would be fun to know.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, but.
We'll get you a site for it.
Okay, that's cool.
Great.
All right, everybody. And what's, oh, Council Biders?
Um, just to Counselor Penamara's point, I know much earlier in this discussion, we brought up the potential of having some of the redesign of this space be able to support a, um, a resilient hub if there's a disaster. And so my guess is there might be funding to support solar power for it in that case.
Yeah, I mean, that, that brings up that point of, about a resilient hub. I think, I, I'd like that to be a good conversation that we all have, because I, it's either, it's either built into somebody else's mission, um, which to me can be, sounds like it could be problematic. Or somehow we have the ability to convert it to a resilient hub after a disaster under the management of this city. And I know that we have the authority to do that under the emergency declaration anyway, but just to outline what that would look like and hopefully get, get collaboration and with the people that are in there would only make that more powerful, I, I would think, anyway. All right.
Well, just a reminder, you had a meeting, I think it's.
January thirteenth.
January thirteenth, if that's.
That's the first meeting in January.
There's a regular meeting except for that, and there'll be a special meeting that's prior to that. They're a short one, it's later than the thousand.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, we have a couple of meetings right, one or right in a row there.
Thursday's open.
What's that?
Thursday's open. We need an.
Oh, yeah, we can always book Thursday. And then is, how, last question I have is, is there any, any updates on the new council rules? Like, when do you think we can vote on that?
I'm thinking in January.
Okay. Sounds good. All right. If there's nothing else, I'll move us to written communications. There are none. And, um, we will go into executive session. All right. The city council will now meet in executive session. Executive session is held pursuant to ORS one nine two point six six zero two H, which allows the council to meet in executive session to consult with council concerning legal rights and duties of a public body with regard to current litigation or litigation likely to be filed. Representatives of the news media and designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All other persons are asked to leave the room. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any of the deliberations during the executive session, except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No final decision may be made in executive session. The confidential information discussed in executive session is not to be divulged outside the session without the express permission of the council as a body. At the end of the executive session, I will adjourn the executive session and reconvene the regulars commission meeting. And so with that, we'll go into executive. Okay.